I invite all who would care to the stand and join us in the presentation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
It is now seven o'clock. Shelby City Council has called an order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You see it, please? Roll call, please, Mr. Trump.
Mr. Rob.
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Gates?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts could not join us this evening, there is a family medical matter which required his attention. Mr. Martin?
I would move to excuse Mr. Rob.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, and a second by Mr. Rob to excuse Mr. Roberts. Discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
That motion passes. I will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal from December 7, 2020.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rob, and a second by Mr. Martin, to dispense with the reading of the Journal from December 7, 2020. Discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
That motion passes. And now comes the time for a public comment. I did not receive any comment at City Hall, did you, Mr. Trump?
No.
As far as I know, there's no public comment to be shared. But we did invite Jessica Griffin, our community, actually, our Economic Development Director liaison, RCDG, and we invited her, Mr. McGlocklin actually invited her, to give kind of a brief synopsis of the year and maybe a look to the future. So, Ms. Griffin, if you would come, and you state your name and address, and then we'll start after that.
Sure, Jessica Griffin, 1185 Smart Road, Mansfield, Ohio, 4493. Thanks, gentlemen, for having me tonight. Try and wrap up 2020, I think we are probably all ready to kick it out the door in many ways. But in spite of all of the challenges of this year, we certainly have some successes to celebrate as well. So we can all be grateful for that as we go into the holiday season, and hopefully 2021 brings a lot of relief from some of the negatives of 2020. So we started out the year very optimistic, the economy looked great, which meant, you know, there's lots of good things on the horizon for Shelby. Full steam ahead on the revitalization project. We also talked at appropriations, if you'll recall, about doing a couple of facade improvement grants. And so that happened all January, February, March, and then the world stopped, so we all kind of had to regroup. As we kind of shut down briefly while we kind of waited for the virus to happen, we were at home, but we were certainly still working. And I think, you know, every year we talk about the retention and expansion program. So that's getting in front of businesses and talking to them about what their plans are, what they, you know, what they plan to expand, if they're having issues, if there's, you know, problems, we can try and connect them with resources. Well, you know, we maybe want to hit 50 to 75 businesses a year. And in 2020, I think I've probably called, been in front of, zoomed with, or emailed just about every business in Shelby and many businesses in Richmond County. In spite of being separated, we were probably more connected than ever, mainly trying to get resources in front of our businesses as they became available. So that took a lot of different forms. When we were first at home, we did Zoom calls weekly with our manufacturers in the county, including Shelby Manufacturers, but those were, that was countywide, so they bounce ideas off of each other as well. And then again, trying to connect them with resources. As PPP and IDOL became available, so those are loans that were available for businesses to take, we really tried to be a good resource, to point them in the right direction, give them updates as things came out, and keep our businesses informed. Seeing a need to, I guess, involve Shelby business specifically more, we did, with the foundation's help for marketing, we did a weekly Zoom call with just Shelby businesses to, just to kind of get the feel for what was happening here and see how we could help them. So we had the Health Department come on as we went into the reopening phase and tried to make that transition easier for them. It was a wild ride, for sure. And what we've seen, you know, in Shelby and really across the county and even across the country, as we looked at, you know, what the economy's doing, it's very interesting. Some businesses have had a really tough year. They've suffered losses like we wouldn't believe. Going through the small business grant program, which we'll talk about in a little bit, that's really shown itself to be true. Some businesses have suffered tremendously throughout this pandemic, and then others, on the other hand, some have had the best year in business in 2020. So it's been interesting trying to figure out who needs what, what resources can help them. So again, just being in front of the businesses, I think a lot of them would tell you, has been helpful. They've been able to connect to resources they may not otherwise have known about. Sometimes I feel like I'm putting the information in front of them many times, but in the stay in age with digital marketing and all the things that are always coming at us, I think sometimes you have to see things three and four times before you actually realize that it's happening. So we've tried to get all the grant opportunities, all the lending opportunities, you know, really in front of the clients, and then talk them through it if they need it, which, you know, it's helped a lot. So as we kind of move back into the swing of things, kind of seeing how the shoe fell as we went into the late summer, early fall, certainly businesses were still suffering. We had hoped that the, you know, pandemic would have subsided some, but as we know, has not. And here we are, kind of in this waiting for the vaccine phase. So we had the opportunity through the generosity of this council, as well as the county, to distribute some of the CARES Act dollars to our small businesses. And I can tell you, it's been basically a full-time job for at least four of us at the chamber. And we've pulled other people in as needed, but, and really, we're through the granting process at this point. We will now be collecting documentation, which will probably go on for the next six months or so, realistically. But as much as it's, you know, it's had its challenges and we've been busy with it, we would all drop what we were doing and do it again because the need is great. And I think if, you know, if you're out and about, we've had a lot of expressions of gratitude for that, those funds, and businesses that said, you know, had we not received this, the doors may not have been able to be opened. So I think it was the right thing to do, we'd do it again, you know, even though it is a lot of work. And I thank you for having, you know, forethought to think of the small businesses when you have those funds available. So just some dollars for you on that. Grants to Shelby Small Businesses, we did about, it was almost $3 million by the time it was all said and done, countywide, to our small businesses. Grants to Shelby Small Businesses, $182,500. So, and quite frankly, some didn't apply or didn't understand, or thought they couldn't. And I went door to door to a lot of businesses and said, hey, this is an opportunity for you, you should take advantage of it, you know, if it's necessary. And a lot of them needed it, and they needed that extra push. So, and then Shelby Nonprofits as well. We did $30,000 between your funds and the county funds that went to Shelby Nonprofits to help them kind of through this as well. So in addition to that, we did work with Clinif, as you know, Clinif is on the, we can kind of line them. So we were able to include their whole village in the process, so they could fund their small businesses. We did $40,000 and $5,000 in nonprofit programs as well. In spite of a strange year, we did welcome new businesses in Shelby this year. Denman Lakes actually opened last year, end of last year. They grew out of their space on Mansfield Avenue and looked for other locations to open. They had contemplated leaving Shelby briefly, but they were able to find space in Shelby with the help of myself and getting them in contact with the right people so that they could find a space here and continue to grow. So they more than doubled their footprint, they're doing great, and they love it. Local Roots Salon opened, we'll be doing a ribbon cutting for them just after the first of the year. That's right downtown on our main street. We welcomed a chill, so if any of you are feeling a little down or tired throughout the day, go get one of their teas, I guarantee it'll perk you up. And they are a secondary location for what is downtown nutrition in Mansfield. So we're excited to have them in Shelby. Quality Outdoor Storage Solutions opened, beside where Denman Lakes was. They are selling storage sheds on Mansfield Avenue. We welcomed Ohio Health Primary Care on the second floor of the hospital, so that was a great investment by Ohio Health, who continues to be a wonderful community partner for us. Yogan Law Offices opened right on Main Street and the old Trade Way Accounting Office. WRP Accounting opened and just actually finished their facade improvement grant. So we were able to do basically half of what we appropriated, which I thought was pretty good for this year. We got two businesses that will take advantage of that. WRP finished theirs, and Airhead Pub likely will have to finish in the spring due to weather, but those should be two good improvements to see downtown. Essential Realty and ESP Graphics also opened on Main Street the end of last year. Expansions, so I think we've talked about this, and you guys have been involved in this process, but Rebar is expanding, they're doubling their footprint, they're almost done with their build, I believe. So we were able to do an enterprise agreement with them through making agreements with the schools, and then you guys approved that, so we're excited about that. Further, we talked about the Jaws Ohio Inclusion Grant, and actually, we were able to secure that. So Jaws Ohio sent them an offer letter, we were like, the end of the program, the money's gone. They told us today, like, it's gone, we don't know if it'll come back, but they're in, they already have their offer letter. So we were able to bring those dollars to Shelby to help that business expand. We have a couple of other businesses that are looking at expansions, they're not ready to announce yet, but they have taken steps to move forward that. So hopefully we'll have some good things on the horizon for 21. We've also got, like I said, a few ribbon cuttings that we'll be, we'll be working on, and then lots of prospective developments. So we've had a lot of interest in downtown. One of the main tasks I had when I started here, and I think we talked about it first year, was doing inventory of downtown buildings. We have that, we have it available. We, I'm in contact with those building owners, and it's paid dividends. Certainly, when Ivory Bean was looking, which we just celebrated their ribbon cutting, they, their realtor reached out to me about another building that wasn't available, and I had found out about a building that was being sold. So the whole process worked exactly as it should have, and we were able to get them into a building downtown. And now we have a walk-in only coffee shop in our downtown. And I don't think I can overstate how transformational that can be for a downtown, to have a place like that that's a destination, that's walkable. It's a big deal. So if you haven't been in there, stop in, you'll probably see somebody you know and have a conversation, which is kind of the whole point. So they're a great community partner, they're, they did everything local, they plan to do that, they're just the kind of people and the kind of place you want to have in downtown. So big success for there, I think more to come with that. The Revitalization Project, I know CIT is going to come and talk to you more about that, so I won't steal their thunder. Certainly, the Path Forward Group specifically has done a ton of work fundraising for that this year. They did put it on hold briefly while, you know, we kind of sorted out what 2020 would look like, but donors were ready and ready to pick up the slack and jump in. So they've run into great success. One thing I will brag a little bit about, the end of last year, something came across my desk, I think Steve Leifer actually handed it to me, about the capital budget. So I'd never really heard of it or knew the process, but it seemed like it fit what our project would be. So I went ahead and applied for the Blackboard Commons Plaza project, put some ridiculous dollar amounts on there, and sent it all in, talked to the gentleman in Off-Halls office, and talked the project through, they said it seemed like it would fit, and they gave back to me. Well, we didn't hear anything, and then as you know, when, you know, when the pandemic hit, the capital budget got put on hold indefinitely, we weren't sure what was going to happen. Well, just last week, something came across my desk that said, hey, your project is in the capital budget, and they're looking to pass it this week. So I'm happy to say that it did pass, booked the House and the Senate. I'm not sure if the governor signed it yet, but my understanding is that somewhat of a foreign language, and it should be, it should be signed. So that would be $350,000 towards the Blackboard Commons Plaza. So super excited about that. In addition to that, something that I, you know, was not involved in, although I supported it, certainly, we will also see probably about $600,000 going to the Kiko Center for first responder training. So super exciting that we got so much of the capital budget money into Shelby. So just super excited about that. As we move forward, I mean, I look at 2020, and in some ways, it's a year people will often write off as, you know, a really bad year, but we were able to kind of persevere and keep going. And I give you a lot of credit for your foresight to move forward with projects when other people were stopping. Sometimes you just have to keep going and see the direction, see the big picture. And I give you guys a lot of credit because you've done that, and I think it's going to set us up for a really bright future. I think there's a lot of good things to come for Shelby. And in spite of, I know, I know there's businesses struggling, and I know there are people struggling, but everyone has pitched in and done what they can. And I truly think that, you know, we're going to come out of this okay because we've continued to move forward and not stopped the momentum that we had going into it. So thank you to you guys, it's been an interesting year, I've learned a lot, certainly. I don't ever want to do grants for a full-time job in my real life, but again, you know, given the opportunity to help our small businesses, it was the best way we could do it. So thank you for allowing me to do that. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you, Ms. Griffin, and again, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, and every so often, something will come to the surface that's like the tip of the iceberg, and we all know that, how that happens in economic development. So thank you, Ms. Griffin, she has that tenacity about her, and it's a wonderful quality to have, an Economic Development Director, so thank you, Jessica.
Mayor.
Yes?
I just want to, I don't have a question per se, but I do want to say that, you know, the ability for us as a community to be able to plan and look into the future and set us up for success in the lean times, it can't be more evident than when we decided to go forward with this position. And I'm not going to speak for council, I'll speak for myself, but I think hiring Ms. Griffin in that position will, I think, prove itself one of the best decisions that we've made for our community as a whole. And certainly, the return on investment has been outstanding thus far, and I'm looking forward to the future when we can, even in the good times, what those look like. So many kudos to Ms. Griffin in that role, and we have a debt of gratitude for her.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, if not, then Ms. Griffin, if you wanted to make your way back to your humble abode, you may do so. You can always catch us live stream, all right. Move forward then from a public comment to reports from standing in special committees. The Finance and Personnel Committee, Councilman Gates.
Mayor, thank you very much. We had a regular session. We had before us the packet that was included in the agendas. So let's take a look, we're going to go to the back page and look at income tax collections. And then what we have here is, the Finance Director gave us a teaser. Two weeks ago, we had this same chart, but instead of just looking at the previous year, we're looking at a three-year average, which will, the idea, of course, looking at it going back three years as we bring down the highs and we bring up the lows. There's something somewhat vaguely scriptural about that, but I don't know. The, but if we look at the top, where we see the cumulative for the year, we can see that we brought in, as of the end of November, $3.6 million, and that was up eight-hundredths of a percentage, percent from the three-year average. So looking at that, it's pretty, pretty flat. But when we compare it to last year, which was an exceptional year, it's down about two and three-quarters percent. Down at the bottom part, we can see month by month. We can see that we, in November, brought in $292,000 in income tax collection. That was up 6.4% over the three-year average, so a good sign there. And again, you know, if you look at just one year, if you look at the previous year, it's up 19% over the previous year, but, you know, that was the low, low month in 2019. So again, that shows the, you know, that's not always a good comparison just to look at, you know, compare one year to the next. The Finance Director said he thinks that December, excuse me, December is going to be similar to what it has been in the past few years. We'll know that in just a few weeks when the books are closed out. If we can proceed to the, be the second page of the packet down at the bottom, here we can see the breakdown in income tax collections, individual business and withholding. Individual is, again, looking at the three-year average, is up 2%. Business, up 13. Withholding, down about 6%. And overall, about two and three-quarters percent down. There was something the Finance Director said that I was really happy to hear. A previous boss of previous employment believed in fact-based decision-making. We could not go to her and say things like, I think, I feel, I believe. We had to have hard facts if we wanted to present something to that director. And the Finance Director said something similar, that he was, and he can certainly correct me if I polarize his quote, but, you know, his gut was telling him that income tax collections would be down next year, and I think he gave a certain percentage. But then when he tried to find facts to justify, you know, things in his head and justify his gut, he couldn't do it. And so that impressed me, that, you know, we're looking at not, I think, I feel, I believe regarding income tax, but coming up with something that's more factually based. You know, like, of course, it's prediction, you know, it's, but again, that impressed me, that we're, you know, not just going to be grabbing a number out of the air, but, you know, trying to justify it. So at this point, I'm going to let the Finance Director, you know, chime in. You know, there's no sense of me translating from English to English when he can speak for himself.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I, Councilman Gates, pretty much hit the nail on the head. You know, like, my gut does say, well, we should be down next year, especially since the tax returns that we will be collecting will be based on the 2020 year. And, you know, looking at, we've been in contact with many of our larger businesses, our manufacturers, and our big employers, and it seems like, they seem to be plugging along better than I thought that they would. So our withholding probably won't be that big of a drop, which is, you know, our largest number there, which is incredibly promising. Individual income tax returns, I don't know how many people in our town are actually on unemployment during the beginning of the year, because unemployment is not taxable to the city. So that's, that's the real fear on the individual tax return side of things. My guess is that, once again, a lot of our major employers didn't end up shutting down. So I'm hoping that we didn't see a large amount of unemployment. You know, I don't want to get carried away and say, this is going to be the greatest year ever. There was a bit of a potential setback with the business return side just today in that when we had our Finance Committee meeting, we were talking about the PPP money, and the IRS was going to tax the expenses that were associated with that money. You know, you weren't allowed, or you did not have to claim that income, but you did not get to claim the deductions that you took for the payroll and such. Just last night or today, assuming the rest that passes through the federal government, they do have an act saying that, okay, we will overrule the turnaroundary service on this one, it wasn't our intent, and you will still be allowed to make those deductions. So that's going to hurt my projection of order for business returns, but I think it's still going to be a fair prediction for next year. And so hopefully we won't have any major, major financial team ask you.
If we can look at the front page of the combined financial statement, again, looking at, starting with the general fund. If we look at the cash balance as of the first of the year, $929,000. Cash at the end of November, $1.2 million. We have recoveries of $156,000, leaving free and clear, a little over $1 million. So again, the general fund is in surprisingly good shape with carryover into the, into the next year. We'll move down to the Health Fund. $41,000 in cash, $128,000, excuse me, $28,000 free and clear. Heart Fund is in good shape as well, $118,000, $91,000 free and clear. Going down to the Fund 354, the Police Court Building. You know, a little bit of a, I don't know, a kerfluffle misunderstanding. It had to do with being, being billed for our payment pre-refinancing and then post-refinancing. So there was, there were some monies that were paid out to the old bondholders that they had not earned, and so the Finance Department is working to get a refund on that.
And we did finally get ahold of the prior bank, and the check is in the mail, so to speak.
Oh, dear, it's in the mail?
Yeah, yeah. Good numbers.
Hopefully received before the 31st, it's in all seriousness.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that would need to be, so, but anyways, we'll continue with the utilities. the utilities. Sewer Fund, free and clear, $166,000. Water Fund, $144,000, free and clear. Electric and Telecommunications, $4.6 million, free and clear. Finally, going down to the, next to the last line, hospitalization, having a balance of $638,000 as of the end of last month, a very good balance when you look to see what we had at the beginning of this year, $397,000. The increase for hospitalization this year, for next year, as we were told, is, is 2.6%. And that is with no change in the plan whatsoever. So I know in the past, the previous Finance Director, I think, had traded off a higher deductible for a lower increase. That doesn't settle well with, with employees, that in many cases, balancing books on the back of, of the employees, those who have healthcare, but there's no changes in the plan, so, and a, you know, very slight increase. That's, I'm not sure what the annual inflation rate is for 2020, but I think that's nothing to kick at. Going to the next pages where we see the comparisons month to month, I'm not going to spend too much time on, on this page. Right in the middle, the one-on-one expenditures for wages. Wages were down 5%. Well, the difference is, is some of those wages were being picked up by the Care's Fund, and so it's just moving expenses out of the general fund into the Care's Fund, but the general fund is, is grateful for that. One thing that the Deputy Finance Director told us last, last Thursday, is the city had just received a, a check from the county for $71,795.92 for additional CARES monies that needed to be expended by today. She shared that when she called the auditor's office to find out, they told her that, that she was, she was the nice person who spoke to them about that. Now, one thing I did read today, pick up in, in the information I get from Washington, is that the deadline to spend CARES money has been extended. So that's, you know, now that we've expended most of it, but nonetheless, you know, we do have some, some leeway. But the unfortunate part is with the, what the Congress passed today, there are no monies for state and local governments. So they've given us, I guess, an extension to extend that, which we don't have, so thank you. Continuing along, again, you can see the comparisons between the, you know, the utilities, revenues versus expenditures. The next page is the Cash Investment Reconciliation Statement. Something new that you see here, up in investments, you'll see a U.S. Treasury bond. We have a slight lender, half a million dollars invested in, in treasury bonds. We knew this was coming. There were some CDs that came due that the city, the Finance Department, and more specifically, the Finance Director and his tax official job, the city treasurer, decided to put some monies into U.S. Treasury bonds. The bottom line is, as of the end of November, the city treasury contained $14,501,022.18. Next page is that little sort of Roush report, which is actually up a little bit for the year. And again, finally get to the income tax reconciliation and de-charge. Mayor, for personnel matters, we've, after the committee, shared that there is one employee at the water treatment plant who had tested positive for COVID-19, and a Shelby Police Department officer is in quarantine in regard to exposure to, to COVID. The, you mentioned we would have an FOP, an update about the negotiations today, and of course, there is a executive session on the, on the agenda. Also, for the Shelby Police Department, there are some retirements and resignations to be announced that, that'll come to us in our, at the appropriate time. Mayor, that's, that's my report. I'm glad to answer any questions if possible, or deflect them to the, to the Finance Director as necessary.
Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gates regarding this report? I may just give a little update. The water treatment plant employee is recovered and now back on the job, and the officer that was in quarantine has now tested positive, so he is not on the job. He is in full quarantine. So just a little adjustment on those two employees. All right, any other questions or comments?
If my colleague, Mr. Martin, has anything to add, I certainly wish he would.
Okay, all right, very good.
Mayor, I move the combined financial statement and the Cash Investment Reconciliation Statement, both dated the 30th of November, 2020, be received, placed on file, be received, placed on file, posted to the city website.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin, that the combined financial statement and the Cash Investment Reconciliation Statement, both dated 11/30/2020, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city's website. Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
A motion passes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gates, for your report.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Move forward then to Utilities and Streets Committee, Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. The Utilities and Streets Committee met the 17th as well. First thing we talked about was the street paving project for 2021. The street paving list for next year has been populated, and the list, everyone should have gotten this in the mail, email, I guess, but anyways, a lot quicker than we get it through the normal mail nowadays. The below list is the estimated cost per street and running fund balance. Simeon Avenue, approximately $62,000. I'm not going to read the exact totals on here, save time. Carleton Avenue, $52.5. Sherman Avenue, $74,000. Park Avenue from Tucker to Reservoir Row, $69,000. Mack Avenue, Tucker to Sherman Avenue, $72,000. High School Avenue, $94,000. And Mack Avenue, Tucker Avenue to High School Avenue is $33,730. The projected annual collections from the street levy are around $450,000. Projection might be a little higher for next year due to the loss of income tax, so they, we are anticipating for budgetary purposes, approximately a 10% loss in that levy collection. If that does fall short, the money from the gas tax collections might be needed to fund the difference from the paving project, and the plan is to bid the project early. More likely, we'll need to wait until midsummer before paving can begin to make sure that the funds are in the account. If funds allow, additional streets will be paved. These will be isolated paving projects, so they'll be outside the main, main paving bid, pardon me. And the 2020 ODOT paving project for East Main Street was postponed, as scheduled for completion date of 7/17/2021. We're also looking at alley resurfacing and between Park Avenue and Mack Avenue. And then future paving projects, we are looking at a Mickey Road paving project, and we're working with Regional Plan to develop the project. This paving project is in preliminary design and engineering stage. This road does qualify to be an ODOT project because it connects two state routes, 39 and 61. The project design will incorporate stormwater management, and the construction would include curbs, gutters, and storm sewers. This project is in the infancy stages, could take several years. The tentative project could start in the year 2023 or 2024, but we're in the beginning features of it. 2021 budgets, the fiscal year 2021 budgets for the utility departments are being populated. These budgets represent the projected revenues and expenses for the Service Department, Water Treatment, Waste Water Treatment, Electric Department, Utilities Office, several other funds. Superintendents are currently reviewing the proposed budgets. The budgets are scheduled to return to Mr. Ensmann by the end of the year. The goal is, Mr. Ensmann's goal is to have those recused budgets to the Finance Director by January 15th. And the reason for that delay, those 15 days, so the year-end reports come as we tighten things up, as stated. All right, before us this evening is our third and final reading of ordinance 31, 2020. A question was presented by Councilman Gates about the line loss multiplier adjustment. Exactly how much does it save? So here's an example, it's given. Estimated savings for a residential customer by reducing the line loss multiplier from 6% to 4%, the savings for a household consuming 1,000 kilowatt-hours a month would be approximately $1.80 for that month, or an annual savings of $21.60. And then obviously, the customer uses less, they get less, use more, maybe more, but that gives you kind of a sense of the totality of it. For a large industrial customer, by reducing the line loss multiplier from 6% to 4%, the savings for a large industrial account consuming 450,000 kilowatt per month would be approximately $820 per month, or an annual savings of around, close to $10,000. So gives a kind of feel for that. All right, storm water management collection. This is a continuation of the storm water management fund discussion. This fund would be developed to financially support storm water-related maintenance capital project costs. Collection will bring financial support to the many storm-related maintenance repairs and capital projects throughout the city. So we're going to be doing a collection design, and we are trying to do this to use that water capital improvement surcharge that will be dissolved. To be able to incorporate it, we have to be able to improve the, so, so. That's why we're doing that. All right, there are two options for the collection process. We can establish a fixed charge within the project equipment rider. Portion of sewer bill is not based on water consumption. The monthly sewer bill is made of three parts, base part, base rate, production cost adjuster, PCA, and the project equipment rider, PER. All three of those sewer rates are based on water consumption. The supposed storm sewer surcharge would be a fixed charge within the PER, meaning the collection would be a set charge and would not be based on water consumption. This, the election would be posted in the sewer improvement fund, but the rest of the PR collection, the money that's collected, would then be used for storm water sewer improvements. Option two is establish a fixed storm water sewer surcharge on the utilities bill. A new fund would then be created, and collections would be posed, posted, and designated fund to show revenues from the surcharge. Expense line items would need to be populated to provide identity for the appropriations. The options are being discussed by Finance Department to decide from the best option, and we are looking for closing discussions at the next Utilities and Streets Committee meeting next year, or next month, both. Anyways, and then we also did discuss the ditch petition, but we also have legislation for us tonight, so I'm going to, at risk of doing basically a reiteration of that during that, I'm going to save that discussion for Mr. McLaughlin during that time. And so, and then we did discuss the lack of sidewalks on Technology Parkway, and around there, there are a lot of runners, a lot of walkers, and the situation would be rather precarious, so we're looking at possible safety improvements along those lines. Obviously, the, the reason that there's a lack of, lack of sidewalks out there is lack of development. The problem is that safety is waiting for development to happen. So Mr. Ensmann and the administration, and myself are going to be continuing talks about what we can possibly do to make that area safer. There's just a lot of truck traffic and going over those hills and such, and there's, again, a lot of runners, a lot of walkers who use that route. I use it myself on occasion, and it can be rather precarious. So we're going to be looking at that as well. So, Mayor, that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Martin in regard to his report? I appreciate it very much. We'll move on to reports of city officials. Before we get into the confirmations, just a few things briefly. Last couple of weeks, again, have been, I guess, typical and non-typical of duties of the mayor's office, committee and commission meetings, and tons of email readings and responses, and dealing with health department matters, and so on and so forth, and staff meeting. Presently working with Dr. Chala and our Board of Health in preparation for the administration of COVID-19 vaccination program here in the city in the very near future, and naturally, that's kind of all developed from first responders, just in general, first responders, and then we like to concentrate on our city employees, and then, and into the general public. There are a lot of issues, logistics of this, and storage, and, and logistics of where you have, especially when it gets in the public arena, and so we're still in, in the infancy stages of that, but we like to roll it out very quickly. We're looking to use the Moderna vaccination here in the city of Shelby. Trying to get a pulse on how many employees will be taken and so forth, get our numbers all lined up. So just a ton of work in lining up for these vaccinations, but we feel that that is part of the mission and ministry of a local public health office here, so that's, I say, working every day on that. And Mrs. Griffin mentioned that we did have a nice ribbon cutting after the Iverveen. Councilman Gates joined, Jessica and Mr. Gates and I there for yet another ribbon cutting, that new business in downtown Shelby at 44 East Main Street. And also, Ms. Griffin is working with the ownership of Rocket. Probably after the first of the year, we'd like to have a kind of grand reopening type event out there. Kudos to them for rebuilding here in Shelby after the tornado threw here, and very, very thankful that they decided to, I guess you'd say, reinvest in the city of Shelby, so looking forward to a, a nice affair out there. So that is what I have in, in preface to the confirmations. Are there any comments or questions for me in regard to that part of my report? If not, I'll move forward to, we have several candidates here for mostly commission positions, and then of course, including Mr. Gates to the, oh, do we have, where are you? Do I miss you? Okay, all right, oh, I went down, okay, there you go. Yep. To the Regional Planning Commission, original County Regional Planning Commission. That has been kind of realigning. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I move the council confirmed the appointments of Edward Attili to the Buildings and Grounds Commission, Jonathan Elgin to the Civil Service Commission, Jeffrey Allen to the Board of Park Commissioners, Kevin Ernst to the Planning Commission, Dustin Boozen to the Planning Commission, Gus Hyden here to the Planning Commission, Joe Geist to the Hurson County Regional Planning Commission, Harold McLaughlin to the Shade Tree Commission, and Edward Frevel to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the confirmation of the candidates so read, and we refer them to each one of these commissions and also to the Board of Zoning Appeals. All right, a discussion? Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Mayor, since my mother is one of the appointments on here, I believe I should have abstained, so since they're all together, would that affect anything if I abstained from all these?
Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I had a somewhat similar situation a few years ago when my wife served on the Civil Service Commission. I am staying from confirming her appointments, and the reason for that is Civil Service Commissioners are paid, it's a minimum salary, $25 a year, paid on or about December 1st. So in that case, I did have to abstain because, you know, I have an interest in that. Now, I'm not going to tell Mr. McLaughlin that, that he, you know, should abstain, you know, or not, but I don't think that he needs to, but that's his call, not mine.
And I don't think there's anything would be unethical. And I don't think there's anything would be unethical value voting in that, in that regard.
Well, thank you, Kelly. But if he wanted to abstain, he should make it clear at some point, you know, that he chooses to, you know, either for or against the confirmation guideline, you know, to the extent that it involves his mother, he abstains from that particular, that particular part.
Okay. All right. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
That motion passes. Thank you. And that concludes my report. We'll move on to a report from our Director of Finance, Mr. Crum.
Thank you. Councilman Gates covered most of the, the major financial points. I greatly appreciate that report. We are quickly approaching the year end wrap-up. We've passed the deadline for submitting new purchase requisitions and we're closing out open POs and getting the inventory counts around and the, the fixed assets for, for the year so that we'll be ready to close everything at the end of next week. So that's, that's really kind of where we're at right now. And then we've started the appropriations process because we're going to get some, some at least draft numbers to you and those particularly Finance Committee as soon as possible. So that's sort of the other big project on my, my plate right now. Other than that, I don't really have any major comments. We do have ordinance amending appropriations for a couple of things and I'll speak of that when, when we get there, but that's pretty much it. It's my report.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? I might say, if, um, Councilman Gates, you talked about extended deadline and, you know, what would we use that for? We probably will have some funds where recs were written and invoices came here, so there may be a few thousand dollars for us to find a place to invest them. But I think everybody did a really wonderful job of finding some COVID nineteen related projects that we could get tucked in in two thousand and twenty. A service was rendered and that was important. And so kudos to everybody across the city, but like I said, that would be about the one thing, we will not have to send those unspent funds back to Richland County. So that's, that we can find someplace to invest a few more monies here. Okay? All right. Mr. Easter, Law Director, a report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Only thing really out of ordinary in the last couple of weeks or since I saw you last is about three-thirty today, we've got an emergency piece of legislation trying to squeak through. I tried putting one together, getting back to City Hall. I was out of the office. I don't know if that made it to the packets tonight or not, but we scrambled and that's the only thing out of the ordinary. Everything else was business as usual for the Law Director's office.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Easter in regard to his report? Not moving forward to Mr. Joe Geist, Project Department.
Thank you, Mayor. Demolition of the drive-through slash ice house slash old church is progressing. I wouldn't, they'll have that down here before too long and get that cleaned up. On West Main Street, all the laterals and the grant portion are done. There's some tanks that need to be collapsed yet, but we do have some of the ones who didn't get the grant have rather large pieces of wood out there in front, so from the AEP project where they can't get to it yet, but they will, they will be connecting soon. Also, I did the campaign chair for the Municipal Division of the United Fund, so I'm happy to report that we did meet our goal of five thousand dollars. We, we were five thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars. So that's the first time since two thousand and fifteen that Municipal Division was over the five thousand dollar goal. So I want to thank everyone who contributed to that.
Here we go.
And also serve as the campaign chair for that and our goal was a hundred and forty-five thousand. I think we saw an article on the paper, we're, we're over a hundred and forty-eight thousand right now and still rising. We're still getting some in. So I, for the, the citizens of Shelby and the area to, to do that during these times, I think is just outstanding. So just like to thank everyone. Also, been serving the last two years as Vice President of Regional Planning and it did task me, which was, I didn't want to be very fun about it, but it worked real well. There's been a problem with the membership of Regional Planning of, I think what it was, there are sixty-some members and any commission to try to do something like that is very difficult to get any, any just continuity or any work done. So there was a group of about six of us, you know, representing cities, townships, the agricultural, everything, commissioners. And so you can see, I passed out this chart on how the commission changed their bylaws to reduce the amount of members. It also reduced the executive committee. So when you had a thirty-some member executive committee also before, it made things very difficult. So that list is on there, you know, the county went from eight to four. There was a question, it used to be all three commissioners, the county prosecutor had some issues with all three commissioners being in one meeting together violating the open, so there's now one county commissioner, the engineer, one from public health and one member appointed by the commissioners. So then, then any city, like for right now, Shelby and Ontario, get the mayor and one mayor appointee. The villages, it's the top two, the top two villages with the most people in them and then the rest of the villages select someone from the mayors of the rest of those villages. The townships went from, well, how many? Every township to four. Now they have four, four township trustees and/or fiscal officers appointed by the Richland County Township Association, so, and then there's eight at-large members. So it did reduce, but I think it'll be a much more efficient machine and there'll be a lot more things done as well. And it passed unanimously by all the commission members who voted at that meeting, so. So if there's any questions on that or anything else, I'll be happy to answer.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Geist in regard to his report? Not moving forward then to new business. Any new business that we brought before council tonight? Mr. Gates.
More, more question than anything. Perhaps Mr. Geist can answer it. It's, I, I often drive over the State Street Bridge over Black Fork, which of course is a county bridge, it's not ours, but that bridge is deteriorating somewhat significantly on the south side of the bridge to the point that the county put up some barrels that I think have even been knocked over. So I'm, I'm wondering if Mr. Geist, I know, I know expect him to know, but he could perhaps let us know what the status of replacement or significant repair is to that bridge and what the schedule is.
Mr. Griffin.
My last conversation with them is they hired a consultant to look over that bridge and, you know, obviously some immediate repairs and so forth need to be done and look for the long term. Obviously, it's not in their initial funding right now. Smiley Avenue is, that should, bridge should be placed, replaced in two thousand and twenty-three. So we, I mean, another thing to report, we've been working with the county engineer on that bridge of making sure we've got the most capacity of water going through there and a sidewalk on each side because there's a lot of kids who walk through there. That will probably have some cost share for the city because we are requesting to, obviously we put some go through council, but we're asking that to be a little bit bigger, to have that sidewalk and so forth. They were already looking at the flood capacity to make it as big as could be and so forth there. We also have a water line that runs right at the bottom of the river and I'm sure Mr. Gates remembers that well, but that water line broke in, I think about nineteen eighty-three, drained the whole water system down, the whole city shut the town down, but it's, it literally runs on top of the bottom of the bank. So we're working with the county on that one to have that board underneath the river off of the side of the bridge so we won't have to worry about that one anymore. But I will get an update on State Street and get back to everyone, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Unfinished business, the future use of Main Street Fire Station, the documents, our physical contracts and assignment now have been signed by all parties. So what was once EMS services now, we have of course Superior Ambulance Service in town and they are carrying on then the, the EMS services, that, that contract has been assigned to them and also the lease agreement has been assigned to Superior Ambulance Service. So they will be leasing it under the same terms as Community EMS did. So that's, those are all wrapped up. We have all the counter signatures and so I, I believe now we can safely remove that from, from the agenda. Mr. Martin.
So we're just planning to lease it in perpetuity?
I think we'll begin to have conversations with Superior now as we do with Community EMS, rather than leasing it, would they, would they want to purchase it? And this, this may come under maybe the Safety Committee. There was quite a search that went on by Community to find a building, another building or maybe build another building. Superior may have some ideas of their own, so I think we're going to open up that conversation beginning of the year.
So the, this shouldn't go on because it's still unfinished because this specifically speaks to the future letter in regard to the real estate as needed or not needed. And obviously, if they're willing to purchase it, then we will be expecting the letter from you that it's not needed for municipal purposes.
We can leave it on that, that's fine. I just, okay.
I just think it's important to have regular updates to keep it on the forefront of mind because obviously, the, the intention is not to keep this property long-term under, on the municipal books. And so if we're, keep, keep on with the lease and, you know, two years comes, three years comes, four years and all of a sudden something happens to the building and we're on the hunt for it, so we need to keep this at the forefront of our minds.
That's fine. We'll, we'll leave it on that. Okay, I'll try to give you updates as things develop. City of poverty maintenance, fifth and, West Main Street. I did not talk to Ms. Griffin. Mr. Geist, have you heard anything? That's last I heard, they were trying to clean up some, perhaps some lees that were still out there.
I think that's where it's still at.
And, you know, we're all hoping that those documents will be signed before the end of the year, if not the very first part of next year. It's in process. Oh, going by the building, I haven't seen anything on the sidewalk at this point, but now we're coming to the free stall season, that's going to be another issue, but that drain comes out there off that roof. So we'll keep an eye on it, but hopefully that'll be in the, the hands of some owners that will be able to address those issues. All right. Any further unfinished business? If not, we'll move forward to legislation.
Ordinance number thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Amending Chapter one thousand and fifty, Electricity, Section one thousand and fifty point zero two, Rates and Charges for Service, Transition Cost Rider, Fuel and Purchased Power and Generation Charges, Determination of Fuel and Purchased Power Charge of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for third reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the third reading of ordinance number thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Ordinance number thirty-one, two thousand and twenty passes its third reading.
Move the ordinance to take it on the pass?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates for the passage of ordinance number thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Ordinance number thirty-one, two thousand and twenty passes.
Ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand and twenty. Providing for the establishment and implementation of an environmental water quality protection grant program.
Third reading. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rob and a second by Mr. Martin for the third reading, ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand and twenty. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand and twenty passes its third reading.
Move for pass, is your order?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rob and a second by Mr. Gates for the passage of ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand and twenty. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Ordinance number thirty-two, two thousand and twenty passes.
Ordinance number thirty-seven, two thousand and twenty. Amending ordinance number eight, two thousand and twenty, Annual Appropriations and Declaring Number Sixty.
Rule requiring that ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates that the rule requiring that ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
And a motion to suspend passes?
Move the ordinance to take it on the pass?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passage of ordinance number thirty-seven, two thousand and twenty. Discussion? Mr. Crum?
Hold.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I, you know, phone call a week or so ago, I somewhat seriously jokingly said to the Finance Director that he would make council members very happy if there were no need for a special meeting between Christmas and New Years. We've not had one of those in, in many years and so, you know, with, with that, with that semi-serious guidance, this is what the Finance Director has prepared for us this evening to, to prevent a special meeting. So he can tell what the, what the details are.
Mr. Crum.
Thank you. Yes, this is just housekeeping. There were a few items and appropriations that when it came down to the end of the year, I was a, a couple of dollars short. Most of them are hospitalization funds. There's, there's a few wage line items. The only really noble thing is the two eighty-three LCR four hundred wage line item. That's our local coronavirus relief fund and that was quite, the last minute addition to that because last Thursday was spoken, the finance report, we received a, a check for a little over seventy thousand dollars that was supposed to be expended by the day. We're like, well, what are we going to do with that? So when, with the last group of funds, you know, we determined we were able to allocate some of the funds to our police and fire wages as some of the job duties changed during the pandemic. And so I believe it was about a hundred and seventy-two thousand or so that, that we were able to reclassify with the last gap of funding. And that was less than what I had calculated those funds for those expenses were. So we, we decided that, well, we'll increase the line items for this fund and transfer more of the police and fire wages into the coronavirus relief fund. Obviously, now we've, we've had a little bit of reprieve as far as the deadline. I'm still fine with increasing this wage line item. The administration can discuss if there's anything other than the, the wages that would be more pertinent, but this allows us to expand those wages this year if council such chooses.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Ordinance number thirty-seven, two thousand and twenty passes.
Resolution number fifty-one, two thousand and twenty. Requesting that the Planning Commission review and update the open space and thoroughfare plan of the parks and transportation plan.
Will the resolution take it on the pass?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr.
Requesting that the planning commission review and update the open space and thoroughfare plan of the parks and transportation plan.
Will the resolution be taken up and passed?
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. McGlaughlin for the passage of resolution number fifty-one, two thousand and twenty. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I was past a week or so reading the traffic plan which the board of education presented to the traffic commission. And in doing so, I recalled that there was a thoroughfare plan in our part of our subdivision regulations and looked at it. And it's attached to the resolution. And you can see, everyone can see that Shelby Avenue is designated as a collector's street. But this was from nineteen eighty-three. And it's a long past time that we upgrade, excuse me, at least look at and potentially revise and upgrade the Parks and Transportation Plan and the Open Space and Thoroughfare Plan. So that's the genesis of this. I think when you look at the appendix six, the Parks and Transportation Plan, there are streets that exist that are not on this map at all. I think out there on Tap Street, the whole extension of the Gammel's Mill subdivision. Poplar and Leslie Lane are not on here. And of course at Fox Run, is that not, is not there? Surprisingly though, we can see what now is Technology Parkway is on here as a proposed minor aldererial from nineteen eighty-three. But again, to see the lands and annexes too that are not here. So it is in great need of revision and updating.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Resolution number fifty-one, two thousand and twenty passes.
Resolution number fifty-two, two thousand and twenty. Authorizing the mayor as director of public service to file a ditch petition for a section of the Black Fork River with the Richland County Board of Commissioners.
Will the resolution be taken up and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. McGlaughlin and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of resolution fifty-two, two thousand and twenty. Discussion? Mr. McGlaughlin?
So Mayor, just give us a quick reminder of how we got here. In two thousand and eighteen, Black Fork Phase One project, they raised approximately two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars to put in the Black Fork along from the northern part of our community east, about thirteen miles to Route thirteen. And then the Black Fork Phase Two project, we raised seventy-five thousand for that. It's two-thirds complete right now, and so they've been working on that from two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. And along the way, the city's contributed about twenty-five thousand dollars to Black Fork, you know, work and improvements. So over those three together, you know, we're coming about almost four hundred thousand dollars worth of work to the Black Fork. Back in February, almost a year ago, local farmer John Schrader, he held a meeting with a party of people around the area that might have an interest. And he brought up the idea of ditch petition. And then the coronavirus hit soon after that. That kind of put things on hold. And then I believe it was Mayor June, the council, said they wanted to put me in the position as a representative to kind of look into this. In August, I walked the Black Fork from State Street Bridge north, a couple of miles to the outside of the community with Matt Wallace. He's with the Richland County Soil and Water. He was doing an inventory as part of this ditch petition process to see what may entail of a project like this. And so he identified hundreds of trees that were potentially able to fall into the river. Log jams, things of that nature. And so at this point, well, I do want to add, while I was walking with him for those few mile stretch, we saw a tree that was laying dead smack in the middle of the river. It was as high as this table and it was about as round as a table and about two tables in length. And so a lot, we had a big rain back in May as an example. And a lot, what we've identified was a lot of the Black Fork Phase One trees and brush that they've cleaned and silt alongside, that rain kind of lifted up a lot of that sediment, pulled it back into the river. And so we're seeing log jams starting to form again along the Black Fork. So Matt Wallace, you know, after his inventory said definitely, you know, from his inventory, it looks like a ditch petition is needed to keep this Black Fork clear. And so again, what we're looking at here is this is a two-phase ditch petition. First is the construction phase and then the second phase is the maintenance. Again, to remove log jams, silt bars, brush, felled trees, remove leaning trees and dead trees along the riverbank and construction of bank armoring as well as part of this. So something else that we've added since maybe you're not aware in the last few months, we were going to go from Mickey Road clear out to the Gysena Road Bridge. We've decided to extend that a little bit further and go to Route thirteen bridge. We've also identified the amount of parcels the community has, which would be part of this bond process. We have five thousand one hundred and three parcels. And so as part of the formula, it's two dollars per parcel plus five hundred dollars, which comes to the bond of ten thousand seven hundred and six dollars. Now, what we just learned today in the meeting with Richland County is the high legislature just passed some legislation which is going to change that bond formula. And so it's going to increase it from, I think, two dollars per parcel to five dollars. So that would make it, and of course, that may be implemented in March timeframe, once the governor signs it and it becomes law. That's kind of the update of where we are at today and how we got here. Are there any questions?
I think the idea was too, Mr. McGlaughlin, was that if we get in while the existing law is in place that the price is two dollars for us, not five. That's from the experience of a couple of the gentlemen who were on the Zoom call this morning. Some saw a lot of guys from Delaware, one Delaware went over in Crawford County. So that was their opinion. So there is a little bit of a sense of expediency on this to get in under that threshold. Okay? Mr. Gates?
Remembering when we discussed this before, were, this would involve only the Black Fork proper and not tributaries? Is that correct?
Yes.
The, in section three, the five thousand one hundred and three parcels, who provided that? I'm curious, where did that number come from?
Roll call.
I believe Eric Thompson with Richland County Soil and Water.
Mr. Gates?
Does that, does that include, does that include parcels that drain into tributaries of the Black Fork? For example, and one that pops to mind is our colleague, Mr. Mark, who's with it's, you know, someone, a good pitcher can toss a ball from his house to Seltzer Creek. So his parcel, his property drains into Seltzer Creek, not directly into the Black Fork. So I'm wondering if this number, this fifty-one hundred is weight, if that includes all the parcels within the city of Shelby? Not all those drain directly into the Black Fork? They drain into a tributary of the Black Fork?
I think the word's been used as the watershed, am I right, Mr. Geis? Well, I mean, everyone's part of the watershed, which eventually winds up in the Black Fork, directly or indirectly.
Yes, from what I understand it is the, you know, obviously it's correct, it does drain into the Black Fork, which is the main carrying body of the water away from there. And as to maintain that main river, obviously everyone who's putting water into it should help pay for that.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Again, as a reminder, if the petition is taken up by the commissioners, this bond is reimbursable. We'll get that back.
Mr. Gates?
Um, we have existing law that's been used in counties everywhere. It's an excellent law, it works in other places, there's no reason why it shouldn't work here. I think it's the best tool we have available. So I just have some, you know, questions about the details. Starting at say about thirteen and working back towards Shelby, we have Franklin Township, Blooming Grove Township, Taz Township, Clinton Township, and then comes to the city of Shelby. Where are these, you know, if we're the five partners, so to speak in this, where are the other four in this process? What are the townships doing?
Mr. Geis, remember how that was, I think the hearing board will be made up of the commissioners of Richland and Crawford County. Did I understand that correctly?
Please correct me, John. It's all he has to do.
Yeah, Ms. Ensmen is on that whole point too.
But this, from what I understand, Mr. Gates, this is just the first step. It is, you have to have just one or two people in this watershed file this application. It then goes to, the county engineer has to create what the actual project is, how much it's going to cost, assess the methodology. Then we go to the commissioners. They have hearings and have to invite every single person in that watershed. This committed group chose to include Crawford County. So Marsh Run even flowing into the Black Fork. Crawford County now becomes a partner on this also. So there's two boards of commissioners who will be the one board for this project, who will conduct the hearings at the site and so forth. So it is a very detailed and lengthy process. So there'll be lots of ways to get more information on this, but this is just the first step. Is that correct?
That is correct. My concern is that that the city of Shelby not be taken advantage of because of our deep pockets. If other subdivisions are going to benefit from this, they need to pull me up their funds too. You know, if you're playing poker, everyone has to hand you up. That's all I want is I want everyone who's going to benefit from this to hand you up.
Because I understand everyone in that watershed project jurisdiction will share that cost of those mailings as well. And that's, that money has been guaranteed by a party outside of the city of Shelby. So we're only spending money within the city of Shelby. And so those mailings will be funded by another source. And then, of course, as the methodology develops, and that's what the engineers will be looking at and they thought this morning. Not, we were kind of thinking almost like parcel, but it may be more like acreage or percentages of acreages. That will, that's how the assessment will be determined, but there's no way to determine that now. We kind of, we hear in our experience, we've been kind of pushing, saying, hey, can you have a ballpark figure of what this looks like per year for someone within that watershed? And I think as soon as we can get that kind of information, that surely needs to be put out to everyone who will be affected. And hopefully positively affected, but we're trying to get something of a number. You know, what does that look like per month for anyone within this watershed, this project? Mr. Gates?
Last question, the, maybe the finance director can answer this. He certified the funds coming out of the sewer improvement fund. I'm wondering why that fund?
Mr. Ensmen and I had kind of gone back and forth that a little bit. And there were just funds available there. We figured that it was, had to do with wastewater, so it would be appropriate.
Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I pulled my codified ordinance electronically today and it's section ten forty-four point oh five. It's out of the chapter called Sewer Charges. And it's the use of funds. Funds received from the users of the city sewerage system shall be used for the payment of the costs and expenses of the management, maintenance, and repair of the sewage treatment works and for the repair and maintenance of the sewerage collector system. This fund is not appropriate for the payment of this bond. I think we need to look elsewhere. You know, this, the ditch improvement, you know, it's not for the management, maintenance, and repair of the sewage treatment works or for the repair and maintenance of the sewerage collection system. So I, you know, I'm happy to support this with a different funding source. I also think that it meets the requirements of existing law.
Mr. Rob? Question for Mr. Ensmen. When the water rises in the Black Fork, is there infiltration into the city sewers?
Absolutely, it is.
So this becomes a maintenance issue?
A hundred percent.
Thanks. Mr. Gates?
I believe that's a stretch. I think there's a more appropriate funding source for this, even out of the general fund.
Mr. Ensmen?
The reason we had decided to use the four oh two is kind of referred to what Houseman Rob just mentioned. When we do have heavy rainy events, the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer are in it. We do not have a buying system, meaning there is not a sanitary sewer and a storm sewer that are provided. But we still have a lot of infiltration into the sanitary sewer. The storm water, all the storm water within the floodplain of the city of Shelby all go to the Black Fork River. So to maintain a storm sewer within the city of Shelby, the sewer improvement fund was sought to use that funding for the spot for that very reason. Now, it was also discussed that the four oh two would have been a stretch, then the general fund would have to take up the cost of the spot. But the four oh two was sought for the sewer improvement. Is that clear?
Um, Mr. Gates?
Mayor, would the resolution be postponed until the finance director can recertify the availability of funds?
Do we have a second? The motion to postpone until the finance director can certify the availability of funds, is there a second? There ain't no second? You know, are there actually motions? Mr. Martin?
I think in a perfect world, we would have no infiltration and we have a separate storm water fund and separate sewer fund and all this other stuff. But we don't live in a perfect world and I'm satisfied. I agree that it is a, it is a quote unquote stretch, but is but is, um, my opinion is that it's less stretchy than that of Councilman Gates. So I'm prepared to vote on the resolution.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Resolution number fifty-two, two thousand twenty passes.
Mr. Gates. Mayor, I understand we have an emergency resolution before us. Resolution number fifty-three dash twenty twenty. Uh, would the clerk read it by card, please?
Resolution number fifty-three, two thousand twenty. Authorizing the mayor as director of public service to extend the late payment charge penalty for residential, commercial, and industrial utility account holders to December twenty-second, two thousand twenty, and declaring emergency.
Mayor, we have a rule that requires that legislation be provided to members of council three days before council meeting. I move that that rule be suspended, and the council proceed to consider this resolution.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin to suspend the rule that a piece of legislation be provided to council three days before the meeting. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
A motion to suspend passes.
Mayor, I move that the resolution be taken up and passed.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of the resolution number fifty-three, two thousand twenty. Discussion? Mr. Ensmann, would you want to speak to this, or Mr. Martin, you want to speak to this?
Either way, I could.
Council members first.
Uh, Mr. Ensmann called me, uh, today and said, uh, uh, basically that, uh, we're getting a lot of calls because we sent out our late payments. We're getting a lot of calls because people are doing, uh, bill pay, automatic pays, uh, and because of the, uh, situation with the post office, uh, those did not get to us in time, so they're being charged, late charged, and they're getting, uh, the notices went out, and people are, um, calling about that. Uh, of course, my first reaction was, I paid by bill pay. Uh, queue check to see if I was late payment on this. And indeed, I was caught in there as well. I just have my, every month it goes out automatically. I don't even really open my bill. Just, uh, I send the same amount every month, and, you know, bills up in the winter. Comes out in the summer with the air conditioning, and, uh, away we go. Um, and so, um, uh, because of that, um, that I would, I would benefit, obviously, from this. Um, I didn't feel comfortable sponsoring this resolution, but I do support it. Um, and we, we are working, uh, Mr. Ensmann and I are working on a longer term solution to situations like this, um, uh, providing some relief so we don't have to do this kind of thing this were to happen, um, again in the future. But, uh, I think this is good, uh, and fair, uh, relief, uh, for those who, to no fault of their own, are negatively affected, um, during this, uh, particular season.
Are there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Resolution number fifty-three, two thousand twenty passes. This lane is business. Mr. Gates.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Martin.
I just wanted to say that, um, I believe I have it right. This is the closest to Christmas that we can meet, um, just because of the way the calendar is. Uh, so it's kind of odd to have a city council meeting now so close to Christmas. But, uh, Merry Christmas, uh, to everyone, um, who is, uh, celebrating such. Uh, it is a, uh, a joyous, uh, time of the year, especially for those in the Christian faith. Uh, and as my grandpa is fond of saying, uh, Christmas time is where God unequivocally said that he loved us. And Easter is when he grew up. And so, um, I, I agree with those sentiments, and to one and all Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I move that council go to executive session for the following purpose: preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin to go into executive session for the purpose so read in the paragraph. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, if this, uh, uh, motion passes, I would request that you, the finance director and the police chief, join council for an executive session in this room.
Mr. Gates.
I can't have the, the, I can't stop the camera and then have it come back up when they come out of executive session.
Is there another private, are we looking for a larger venue, so to speak? Uh... Mr. Rob.
Can you remove the camera to the hallway? I probably could.
All right. All right, that works. Okay. So, uh, we're going to executive session, and we'll be remaining in the room with the camera removed. Uh, vote on that motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
The motion passes. We'll be going to executive session at, uh, like this, eight thirty-seven. Uh, we also verify those.
Who's in that van?
[inaudible]
What about, um... Is there something on this?
There's funding.
Oh, to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough.
[inaudible] This is a terrible.
[inaudible]
Can you ask, can you ask for, uh, what, what, what we should buy? Another. Take a drink.
[inaudible]
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 Hmm.
[inaudible]
[inaudible]
Yeah.
I know, I know.
So, we're supposed to...
Here we go.
So, like, you.
You want to show us?
We got it.
No, I won't.
Not if you have a plan.
Not if you have a school.
That's how you got round.
But you had your own.
This cat, you think that this happened?
You're not one of them.
So, so.